Ask them to wiggle it, Peter.
Hey, hey, guys at CMC, if you're ready wiggle one of the cameras. Okay, there we go, thank you. Okay. Let's, um, let's call this July first meeting of the Mounary Town Council to order, let's start with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. We have no presentations tonight, first up is the approval of council meeting minutes, first the, got the July third meeting minutes and then the closed meeting minutes that followed that, did anybody have any changes?
I had one question, under item eight.
Which one did?
The item eight.
June third?
Yeah, under June third.
Regular?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Uh, when we talked about ordinance twenty eleven seven, the ethics ordinance.
Yep.
Um, I think I introduced that and... Because, the way it reads, I don't remember, I don't, I think I introduced it and then I amended my motion, because I know at one point Chris asked to add an amendment to the motion and I said that I wasn't going to amend it and I know you seconded both times, Peter.
Right.
Just for discussion purposes.
So you wanted to send it back and have staff research it?
I, I just like them to research.
And it doesn't even, it doesn't actually end here, it actually only shows us voting on the motion, it doesn't show us... Right, but what I'm saying is, did we actu- it doesn't actually show us voting, um, down the ordinance, it just shows us voting down... It died for...
It, it died.
The amendment we voted in.
No, 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 the actual ordinance.
Now, we moved to amend it and...
Right, the amendment died, but it doesn't show us, we, we would've still done something on, on the motion.
Yeah, I thought we killed, I thought we voted down.
I thought we voted down the motion.
The amendment.
Right, a- and the motion.
Yes.
Or the other way around.
Because, because I made the motion and the amendment and they were both one-four.
Sure, so let's just have staff, we'll send it back to staff and have them research it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Debbie, uh, just one thing from me since we're fixing things, uh, number five, report is misspelled. Mounary Volunteer Fire Company, report. Okay, so we'll, we'll push that off, we'll get that back next month.
Um, what about, you wanna do the...
We got the closed amended meetings, did anybody see any issues in those?
I'm, I'm, I'll send those.
I will second that, any discussion on the closed meeting minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you unanimous Debbie? Uh, police report.
To them.
Is that signed for me?
No, Steph.
Oh, okay, getting the reports, thank you. There you go, guys.
Hopefully there's one for everybody.
Yep.
Good. Okay, good evening, um... Once again, the re- the report, I've included a lot of stuff, uh, in this one report, it'll be a tally sheet, which provides a breakdown of the calls, uh, total calls, I even, you know, have calls just outside of town jurisdiction. It is front and back, I, I forgot to mention that in order to save a little paper, it's front and back. You'll notice on the back of, I believe it's the third page, the legend that was requested.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
The nice thing about that is it really won't, that won't really change. I mean, you don't have to mess with that every month.
Correct, correct. Um, once again, the breakdown for the v- uh, fuel usage for each of the vehicles of the five in town and the very back page, uh, is gonna be significant calls, in addition to just noting that on the report, this is actual, uh, a narrative portion, the daytime location, I have three listed here this month that I deem significant and so did the other five resident troopers, uh, the first one being a motor vehicle fatality involving a motorcycle and another passenger car, so certainly that, um, you know, is newsworthy and this gives a detailed account as to people who were involved, et cetera, et cetera. In addition to the initial report, the trooper will complete a detailed crash investigation report, which is actually a little booklet, he'll have thirty days to submit. The second one here is, uh, category one crime, two once seen arrest for burglary and one of the subjects of the two arrested had an open warrant through the state of Delaware, so that was served as well. And the third one was, uh, the carnival, uh, an incident between two juveniles. Uh, a knife was displayed, so that of course, uh, jumped it up in severity, really didn't play a material part uh, in the incident, but it was still displayed and, and noted. And once again, it's just a detailed account.
Nice job, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it. And I see the fire company has arrived, Bruce?
Well, being we only had a few hours since the month ended, we don't have a statistical report done yet, uh, but I do wanna remind everybody that we have a little activity coming up at the end of the month on the twenty-second that week and we hope to see everybody at the carnival and spend lots of money, thank you.
Monday is, uh, is council and the dunk tank night, so if you don't like what you hear tonight, show up Monday. I hope, I hope we'll top last year's receipt.
And we have a special target, it's gonna be this big.
Uh, Bruce, uh, you got my email today, we're still trying to schedule a meeting with the commissioners regarding the fire attacks.
So remember, the first night of the carnival, council and mayor and the dunk tank night, so please show up.
Should we, can we post a schedule on the town website?
Not sure.
So you could go after your favorite, you go after the person you want.
Alright, let's, uh, community concerns, citizen comments, this is a time we set aside for any residents who wanna address the council on any topic, uh, please feel free to come up to the podium and talk about whatever you wanna bring up. Don't see anybody, John, is that what, okay, that would be you, I was, I kept waiting.
Okay, July twentieth.
Gotta ID yourself, John.
What's that?
You have to ID yourself for the record.
I'm John Gillett, nine oh one, Scott Heather Avenue, um, July twentieth, the Ridge Seals Swim Club is hosting our divisional meet. Uh, five hundred plus swimmers, we're starting at six fifteen, we can go as late as three o'clock, hopefully we won't go past two, we're working on ways to reduce the number of swimmers. For parking, we've parked on the pass, this is what I had worked out with Mark Moxley for a two thousand and seven meet, we park on one side of Marydale Drive, we park on Beck Drive, due to concerns with the narrowness of David Court and Lewis Court, we don't put any cars in there. We've used, uh, Wildwood Park and we actually have someone in there and Mark had said it's okay to park on the grass fair. We're also looking at possibly using the carnival grounds, we're gonna contact, uh, the fire department and see if we can park people there and then get a shuttle bus. And I would be willing to talk to any one of the streets and road or any one of the council members.
I would suggest the person to contact at this point would be Brian Johnson, he's kinda picked up Mark's job and then some.
I've worked with him, uh, for our last meet.
Yeah, yeah, so whatever, you know.
We're also having a meet on, um, this, this Saturday and it seems this year there's kind of an explosion in the number of swimmers. We used to have a hundred and twenty swimmers, now we have a hundred and sixty and Lake Wimbor is one of our other teams, they have a hundred and eighty swimmers. So it's five hundred swimmers, but there's a lot of siblings and families, so it could be four hundred cars, maybe a thousand people at our pool. So I just wanted to inform the town that we're having this event, so you don't get any calls from, I guess, the people on Marydale.
Okay, thank you, John, I appreciate it.
We, we need to get any calls on your first meets, I would, I know, and Brian has already got the email to take care of your current, so I'm sure he'll take care of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any other community concerns, citizen comments? Come on up, please. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Karen Stanton, I live on one oh three West Manor Court at Mounary. Um, we live in a circle of nine single-family homes and this has been going on for twenty years, uh, we, there's a court and there's a grassy section and there's only one family that cuts the, uh, grassy section in the circle, nobody else wants to do it and, you know, it's a burden, it's time-consuming and whatnot, so all the families would like the county, I guess, to come out and cut the grass if that's at all possible.
What's the address?
We don't have a homeowners association.
I know where it is, I actually own two of the townhouses going into that development.
Oh, okay, we don't have a homeowners association or anything like that.
There is an HOA for the townhouses, uh, but there's not for where you guys are up around the circle. Uh, Brian? Brian was looking up, did he sort that out, 'cause, that's right, I was with you Heather when Brian came in and asked for that. We're trying to figure out who owns it.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
Okay. If it's, if it, if it is a, you know, a town property, then the town would pick up cutting it, if it's not a town property, then the town can't cut it, you know, we, we can't... Okay, we did check that out, then who, does it belong to all the home... So it belongs to the home, so, so it would belong to the homeowners, it's not ours.
Where's it at?
It's, it's a grassy circle in the middle of, uh, West Manor Court. 'Cause I was actually here when Brian came in one morning and then sat down with Heather and I, we pulled out a bunch of plaques and I wasn't sure what they... Were, so, but obviously Monica, our administrator's saying that, I think you're right, I think everything you saw said common.
Yeah, it was like twenty years ago, I know a, a friend of ours that lived in the development, the county had built, uh, planted trees there and bushes, that was like twenty years ago.
It wouldn't have been the county, because the county wouldn't do anything inside.
It would either be HOA area or ours.
Right.
We're actually looking at it on the screen now.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, the problem is the town, we, we can't take over and start cutting grass that's not ours.
I understand that.
And there are probably, like, for example, those townhouses, did I, I have a couple of that lead into that, um, there are several pieces of property there that, that belonged to the townhouses as well and we have to get them cut. Um, now, what we do is we all chip in and pay somebody to cut them, you know, 'cause I told them, I said, "I'll, I'll pay," you know, I got enough grass to cut. Um, but I, that's probably, some, all the residents there probably need to get together and sort that out, but...
So you don't have an HOA?
No, we don't.
Did you have one at one time?
No, we never did, no, we never did.
Never had an HOA?
They may have had something, I, for example, my, my development doesn't have an HOA, but there was something that wa- was in effect when the houses were being built.
Doesn't say yet.
No, I looked at them with, 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 uh, with Brian and, and Heather, we pulled all the plaques out. It is a common area that belongs to all the homeowners there.
Neighborhood kid.
Yeah. I mean, it's, like I said, it's no different than the, you know, than the townhouse that I own, it's four doors away from that, we have to cut that common area in our, in our development.
And the deed when you bought your house, is it referenced that property as being a common area?
Pardon me?
When you bought your house, is it referenced that property as being a common area?
Yeah, common area, right.
Yeah, that's what the deeds also, I mean, we pulled the deeds.
It does say that in the deeds.
Yeah, they all, they all, well, not their deeds, but the plaques, which would've been what would've been with the deed, they say it's common area.
It sounds like it's, unfortunately for you guys, well, not unfortunately, I mean, now you have the ability to take really good care of it. When, when the town was building the circle in front of my house, very similar to yours, they did a really good job, but our landscaper does a much better job, so you could do something really nice there. Now you have the opportunity.
So maybe, maybe, maybe one of us could build a house on it, since nobody wants to take responsibility.
Yeah, it does belong to all of you, um, I would take a look and see if somewhere in your deed, buried somewhere, if there is some reference to an authority structure, for example, I live, I have, you know, I still have a couple of townhouses there, but I also live just further down the other end of that street. Um, I'm, I'm like the exact opposite of you and, and in our deed, although it's not active, there is a provision for homeowners association. We've never activated it because we've never had a problem, I wouldn't be surprised if in your deeds, the original deeds in the original houses, which, which you would've taken under, you know, they, they would still be binding to later users, if there's not a provision in there for one.
If, if you go to...
As others, the homeowners are responsible for creating one if they so choose and it might be time to choose.
If you go to Village Gate or even Summit Ridge or around Butternut Circle, you'll see a lot of great examples of what you can do with that island, so I suggest you take advantage of it and do something really nice there and improve your property values.
Okay.
You have a good opportunity there.
We looked at, we, like I said, we looked at it just, 'cause it came up earlier this spring, to see if we could start cutting it, 'cause that, our, our public works guy came in and said, "Where, where are the plaques for this, let's look it up," and we dug up all these old papers and we couldn't.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I, I, I hope you understand, we, we can't, we can't cut stuff that's not the town's, otherwise we'd, you know, why not cut my yard?
Right, okay, okay.
Alright, I'm sorry, if there's anything we can do to help, like, you know, if you find something in the deed or something, let us know.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
Alright, well, thank you.
Sure, take care. We have anything else? Anybody else? Alright, let's move on. Ordinances and resolutions. Okay, yes, now we're gonna call Tom, although we probably get to do this one quickly, we have the ethics ordinance here for introduction. Well, these minutes are quick, I introduced it. Somebody else can dial Tom, I had, uh, I made a couple changes in it, guys, you can look them over, Tom emailed out a red line copy for everybody.
What is this, the ethics?
The ethics one, it's just here for introduction, it'll come back up next month. Uh, I made minor changes, um, I changed, I think I told, I've told most of you probably one time or another.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to report stocks if they're publicly traded, unless they're publicly trading, we own more than five percent.
And property in the surrounding towns.
And only property in the surrounding counties, you know, you own a piece of property in Belize, you don't have to report.
Did we, uh, did any of that take into consideration, the Sykesville, I know we couldn't do, um, the other ones because either the size or...
What was the issue with Sykesville?
Sykesville's approved.
I checked, Sykesville, Hancock and Hampstead. Sykesville did pass theirs, they made some changes and it passed. Hancock is so small that they actually didn't have to...
What about Sykesville's size? Sykesville's a good bit smaller.
There you go, you got a model right there.
I sent copies to everyone, you'll have that.
Yeah, that rolled through.
Hampstead is still tabled.
Hampstead, Hampstead is where we are.
Yeah, because didn't Hampstead get a letter back from the state saying that they didn't agree with, like, four or five points?
Yeah.
But they're still like where we are.
Yeah, my actual, my one on stocks, I think is less intrusive, is, is more intrusive than Sykesville's, 'cause Sykesville's you had to own twenty percent.
Right.
I put, I put, I put five percent in mine, so, so presumably, if they took, if, at least on that one provision, if they took Sykesville, they'll take mine. So we will...
We'll put it down there.
So everybody take a look at that, we'll, we'll bring that back out.
So is this, is this the red?
The red line?
I, I don't know if they printed it with red lo- with red on it, my changes are on page twenty, look at page twenty, if it's red...
They need to redesign it, it's tabled.
Yeah, it's red.
And all the room down there.
Yeah. It, it, it's actually printed in red, my, you can see my changes are on page twenty.
Tom, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, hey, Tom, welcome. For those of you who wanna know, our town attorney is out of town, so he is appearing by, um, teleconference.
And he is not required to be at these meetings.
He's not a voting member of council.
I opted to spend money for the little holographic Tom, I would sit here at the chair, but the council would go on.
We need a cutout or something, just to...
Yeah, car.
It says, it says RG three in your seat.
Can, can we get a cutout of the Maytag man and say, "In your seat"?
Alright, ordinance two thousand thirteen dash four, I think we, that one has been withdrawn because Planning had to cancel their meeting and... Well, that's what, Scott indicated that, I think Heather's, okay, so that one will probably be on next month's agenda.
Yeah, I'm, yes, I'm fine.
Two thousand thirteen dash five, that is our water allocation ordinance, that is just here for really setting a public hearing. Um, technically reintroduction, so technically I will introduce it.
Right, and I'd like to make an amendment to...
Um, okay, do you wanna make that now or wait till we actually reach it or hit the public hearing end of it?
Um, let's make it now.
Alright, although we, we can't vote on it now.
Understood, but I just wanna get the council's consensus on it.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, do we need to do this formally or informally?
Well, it has to be really informally because we're not voting on the ordinance.
It's being introduced.
It's just being introduced and we're going to public hearing on it.
Okay, alright, so, uh, we'll do it informally, so, um, a couple comments before I go over the amendment that I wanna make. Um, last time we looked at this, so first of all, the council recognizes the planning commission as experts in the field of planning and, you know, the council and the town absolutely have to have planning in order, you know, to provide us with sound planning practices and advice. Um, last meeting, council was unanimous in that it wanted to retain the authority over the water allocation. That was pretty clear from the council, it was unanimous from here. Um, at the meeting, also reflected in our meeting notes, minutes from last time, council by consent gave one of the council members the authority to work with Tom to modify the amendment. That didn't exactly happen, that council person rather referred it back to Planning and said, "Hey, can you guys take another look at this?" Because council wants to retain the power to, um, retain the, uh, the approval authority over the actual water allocation. So, it's come back to us and I know Planning's had some discussions about this, but what's come back to us, I don't think exactly fits what the council's intent was. So, if you refer to page nineteen, which is the section that I want to amend, and I'll go ahead and read it and I apologize for the confusion, but my amendment will go something to this effect. So referring to page nineteen, uh, down at the bottom section, A in red, beginning in two thousand and fourteen and every two years thereafter, at its regularly scheduled meeting in March with due notice and after a public hearing and with due consideration of the town engineer's recommendations, as set forth in one oh nine dash nineteen dot two B. Above, the town planning commission shall, now, my first change is, my first change is we're gonna cross out the words by, by, resolution make.
Well, the one by's crossed out, so you're just doing the other by.
Yeah, by resolution, so, it will read now, the town planning commission shall make a recommendation.
Okay.
So you're saying get rid of by resolution?
That is correct.
And put in A.
Make a recommendation.
To make a recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Good town council.
Sorry, yeah, Dave, sorry, shall make a, yeah, make a recommendation, thanks.
Shall make a recommendation?
Yes. To the town council as to allocation of the town's available water capacity yield and available sewer capacity yield among allocation categories, allocation categories, in accordance with the section, okay, now the next changes.
You need to change that, that's typo'd anyways, resolution's misspelled there.
Yeah, yep, now the next changes, the planning commission's...
Recommendation.
Affirmative, so, resolution is deleted, the planning commission's, resolution's deleted, replaced with recommendation. The planning commission's recommendation shall thereupon be transmitted to the town council for consideration at the town council's regularly scheduled meeting in April. Now the next change is, the town council may either approve, comma, disapprove, comma, or modify the planning commission's recommendation, period. And then we strike, but shall have no power to modify the resolution, so I'll just repeat that again if it helps. The planning commission's recommendation shall therefore be transmitted to the cow- town council for consideration at the town council's regularly scheduled meeting in April. The town council may either approve, comma, disapprove, comma, or modify the planning commission's recommendation, period.
Said strike.
Strike, but shall have no power to modify the resolution. Now the next change is, if the town council disapproves the planning commission's recommendation, not resolution, recommendation, the town council shall provide to the planning commission a written statement of reasons for the disapproval. And here's my add.
Sorry, I have to reboot.
And request the planning commission reconsider the allocation categories, period.
What was that?
So, so the last sentence would read as follows.
And request.
And request the planning commission reconsider the allocation categories.
It's like a weather alert.
It is, you can't stop it, I had to reboot to get some information.
Should we go to the base?
Is there a weather alert coming in?
Floods, hurricane and...
Reconsider the allocation.
Reconsider the allocation.
Reconsider the allocation categories.
The allocation categories, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just...
No, it's all good. And then, after that, the remainder of the section is struck. Now, the reason behind the change is, is as follows, I believe this close, more, this closely follows what the council's intent was. It's more aligned with the council having the final authority over the allocation of resources, just as the council has, retains the authority to allocate financial resources. And this gives the council the ability to either approve, disapprove and change it itself, or disapprove it, send it back to Planning for additional consideration. The way it's written now, this thing could go back and forth like a ping pong ball without any resolution.
Right, 'cause Planning could pass a resolution, kick it to us, we disapprove, but it's still, but it goes back to Planning and then they do it again and then we would get it back and disapprove and it never actually gets resolved, 'cause nobody actually has the final determining factor.
Right, and, 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 you know, the other, the key point of what I believe it should be changed is like, the, the council is ultimately responsible to the citizens. So, I mean, the council should, can, I believe the council should have the final authority over the allocation of the resources, because we're elected and we're directly responsible to the citizens, whereas Planning is appointed, so...
Uh, let me ask you one quick question, because I, I agree with you on the ping pong ball going back and forth, now, do you think that we could be setting ourselves up for the ping pong ball if we make a recommendation back to Planning and ask them to reconsider? Or do you think we should either do a approval or a disapproval, like, modification?
I, I, I thought about that, that very, that very thought, Dave, and the reason why I, I think I'd wanna leave it, I structured it this way. We can either say thumbs up, it's all good, we can say we deny it and just change it ourselves.
Okay.
Or, we can say we deny it and ask Planning to pr- please reconsider. So, let's take the scenario where we deny it and we ask Planning to reconsider. Planning, you know, again, studies the issue, comes back to us with a new recommendation and then, yeah, we either say yes or no. Yeah, the ping pong ball could start all over again, but at least...
We do have the ability to cut it off.
Okay, and, and that's my whole thing, I mean, I just don't wanna get into this vicious, vicious cycle going back and forth, so, I mean, as long as, as you realize that, okay, we say, "No, we really don't like this, take another shot at it" and if they kick it back and they say, "Well, you know, we really, we stand behind our recommendation," then at that point, we can kick in and say, "Okay, well, no, we disapprove this, we're gonna go with X."
And a simple majority vote here takes care of the issue and then we move forward.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm good with these changes.
Alright, well, yeah, yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it either, Scott?
The only, there's two things, one, there's a spelling type of resolution in your red text, the planning commission's resolution. The other thing is that Planning never had input to sewer capacity, is this something new you want them to do? 'Cause allocation for sewer capacity was never thought, discussed, considered, it's just sewer.
Yeah, the sewer capacity, actually, I didn't, I, I didn't key on, 'cause we've really concentrated on water, 'cause we think that's where the...
Yeah, I just saw sewer, it says and sewer, so...
I, I don't see, I think, I think...
I think you just left it in, right?
Yeah, I just...
Sewer, me.
The intent was to, um, make the, both the water and sewer allocations...
They kinda go together, though.
I think the water and sewer should stay together, because honestly, I think sewer is gonna be more, I think, in, in the long run, the sewer capacity is going to be more of a hindrance than the water.
No, definitely will, we're already at capacity.
Alright, well, Chris, let me suggest you, you know, get us an alternate, you got, Debbie, get us, get us an alternate copy of that, 'cause we're just gonna set this for public hearing tonight, that's all we're doing.
Okay, Tom, hey, Tom?
Yeah.
Did you catch that?
I did, yeah, and it's, and, um, I'll confirm with you, uh, Chris, make sure I got everything correctly, but, uh, I did get that.
Okay, but it seems like there's general consensus in the council for this.
Uh, I'd like to see an opportunity to weigh in.
Debbie wants an opportunity to weigh in.
I wanna just check one thing before we move on, um, that last section, right after, um...
He's gonna get it to you.
I know that I wanna...
It's not a formal motion, so it doesn't...
We don't wanna make it, okay.
It's not a formal motion, we're not, it's not, it's just here for introduction tonight, he's just kinda letting us know what he wants to do and he's gonna draw it up for us.
And, and the only thing I'd like to request is just that Planning does get to look at it, because the last discussion we had when Councilman Evarich was there, there was a big discussion about...
That'll set us back through a whole nother circle.
Understood, but we know you're...
But I wanna let Pat talk, Pat, you're up.
Thank you.
Can you help us Pat nicely?
Hopefully, hopefully I'll go through this uninterrupted, I know it's tempting, a couple things, Chris, you would note it, by the way, I, I don't have a strong opinion either way on this, I'm just gonna throw out some ideas, some thoughts, I did a little bit of research within the last twenty minutes, uh, just for you all to consider when you make this decision. One, uh, I was at the same meeting and I did see a consensus from the council, I did not see a consensus from the council other than to say that you wanna veto upper-down power, I didn't... or down power. I didn't see any consensus from the council that said you wanted the ability to tweak it. So when I heard, it's tempting, isn't it? When, when I heard that there was consensus for approval authority, I just didn't know what the definition of approval authority was. I know there was definitely, you wanted ultimate veto or no veto, and now tweaking is getting into maybe a different area. I think there is some transparency in it going back and forth, at least one time, at least one volley. If it comes from planning sits on the table that same night, if you get the ordinance, you decide to alter it, the public really doesn't have a chance to, to really get involved. But if you were, as you suggested, to get it and send it back to council, not with the option to say...
You give it back to planning?
Excuse me, back to planning, not with the option, say, no, we can approve at that meeting. I think it should go back to planning at least one time, and I share your concern about the volleying back and forth. There is a way that you can have win-win, the board's looking for, is to say, if it does volley back and forth once, twice, we can make it once, just as long as we get the transparency out there. Then if it comes back to council, you could also have your adjustment power, but I would suggest perhaps by a supermajority. That would just give another level, because planning is charged with getting down into weeds. But ultimately, Chris is right, town council has the authority. So what's the problem with setting at a higher level, giving it a supermajority? One of the advantages of keeping things on the planning level is, whether we like it or not, I know deals are never made, but it keeps politics out of it. That's their only focus, is to work on planning issues. That's all they do. They do nothing else. Up here, we deal with a lot of issues. So I would say that you can retain your power that you're looking for. You can retain tweaking, but set a higher bar, maybe a supermajority.
All right, let's, let's keep all that in mind.
Thank you, Mike, for letting me finish that.
Keep all that in mind as we move forward on this. We need to set a date. Debbie?
But one thing I...
Okay, Bob's got it.
Heather was trying to...
Oh, is Heather, you got something?
I don't, I, I'd like to jump on what Councilman Strong was suggesting. At the last meeting where we were basically supposed to be discussing the proposed language, we found a, a bit of a disconnect in the way that we had originally thought the process to go. Jennifer Smith, Leslie Dickinson and I are working together to clarify the process, what to do when the water allocation does not meet the needs of a project. That's a very important component, not only to get the ordinance ratified, but we, we want to make sure that it makes sense. I would ask if there's any way, if you can set a public hearing, you know, not for next month...
Well, then, let me ask you this. We don't, we don't even have to technically deal with this tonight, or, or schedule this tonight. I mean, I'll leave it up to, something I'll ask Chris, because you're the one who has the proposed changes, but do we just want to kick this, just say, let's not introduce this, let's let planning run it back?
I, I'd like to...
As far as the process issues, not how this...
Yeah, give him, give him a quick summary. I think it's important. Does anyone know what she's talking about? It's basically, if people are, you want to explain it, Scott?
Yeah, so, so basically, we had a big discussion, and I wrote our initial formula for Heather, and they're working it. But in a nutshell, it was if we allocate water based on whatever percentages, whether council or P and Z does it, and then all of a sudden the water allocations change, where we have less than what was allocated, well, you run into a problem, because you've already pre-promised water to certain individuals, they're starting plans and everything, and we run into a condition where the town now is obligated to provide water we don't have.
That has happened to us before.
So what we are doing in this process that we started, and now Heather's working with Jennifer and Leslie, is that we're determining, here's how it's going to work, here's how, if the water allocation goes down, I'm just going to cover it in a nutshell. If the, if the water allocation goes down, then essentially, the next person that's on the waiting list that was supposed to get water, if they don't decide they want to take the water because they can't use a portion of it and they need that whole amount, they can stay on the list and let the next person in line go. What that eliminates is a stopgap of one individual waiting until they have the million gallons of water that they need, and everybody's held up if they only need ten gallons of water. Because the way it's currently written right now in the ordinance is, every single individual has to wait until the one before them is done. And it's a first in, first out. So that has to be changed in the ordinance, and that's, that's one of the things that we discussed.
Well, it sounds to me like maybe planning has more to do in this ordinance than, and we're not really ready for it yet. Bob?
The, the one, the one thing that I think, that I understood, I, I tried to make it clear that we don't want the ability to tweak. Okay, we don't, we don't want, it's, it's not something that we want, but if the council has to make a decision, shut off, at some point, we're going to make a decision, and this keeps going back and forth, then we have to have the ability to modify the number.
And I think that was in there in the word that...
Right, right. But I very clearly want, want the planning commission to understand that we do not want, it, it's not my, my intention to, to be changing their numbers. They are the experts. I don't want to be changing their numbers.
Chris?
Right, so to kind of summarize, I think, agreed. We, there's a lot of discussions we had here at the meeting, plus at planning, about tweaking. However, once reading this, clearly the ping pong ball's got to stop, so it stops, it stops here. Hence, the way my amendment is written is, we either say yes, no, or send it back for more advice, but ultimately, we make the decision.
Right, if we have to modify, we do.
Right, so what I suggest, I guess what I suggest to the council is, I've got, you know, proposed language, Tom will place it in there. As Scott notes, there's some process issues. So let's go ahead and have, my suggestion is, let's have Tom change the language to what we've just discussed here, and instruct planning, you know, please leave section A alone, because this is what the council desires. Please instead address the process issue that Scott, and then we'll pass it.
I think, I think all they're going to focus on is the process, which I agree with, and then the only other stipulation that we can discuss as a body is, how many times, if at all, it goes back to planning.
Right, and those would be tweaking. We may have, they have to send it back once rule or something.
Right.
And those are little tweaks that we can make.
Because then it covers the transparency that the mayor was recommending of at least one time, the public gets a chance to look at it.
But it sounds to me like we're not ready to set a public hearing yet. Is everybody...
Maybe, maybe push it till planning can have their next meeting.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think by July.
All right.
Planning, planning chairs here.
One of the process things is, when this process issue was brought forward by a member of the public attending the works, so the process is already working, so we're reacting to that.
So let me, let me ask this. The, the process that you're looking at right now would be something that would, that would benefit the town, because the way I understand it right now is, it's first in, first out. If somebody's waiting on a million gallons of water, and somebody beneath them needs ten gallons, we have to fill this need before we can fill this need. But what we're looking at doing is changing the process that would allow us to say, okay, this person needs a million gallons, we're going to fill this need first because it's...
Sort of. So just, just to clarify, what it, what it does is it allows the individual, if the person who needs a million gallons...
Right.
And I'll just walk you through real quick. It's easy. If they need a million gallons, and we say, hey, can you break up your project into thousand gallon increments or whatever, and they say, sure. We go, great, we've got X number thousand gallons.
Okay.
Do you want them? And they say, yes. So the proposed process we're working on right now is, they can take that, but then the additional amount they need puts them at the bottom of the list. They get something now that they can do something with, but they're put at the list, first in, first out, and then that clears the queue so all the other people can move out. If that individual says, absolutely not, I can't break my project up, which we had an instance like that, Heather, then that individual can say, you know what, I have to have this, or my project just doesn't work. I can't use thousands of gallons, I need a million. So we say, okay, fine, you're first on the list when we have a million gallons, and we get our increments that come in. They reserve the right, that individual at any time, to say, you know what, I'll take it, or I pass, let the next person have it, I'll still stay in the list at my position, but next in line gets the opportunity of, do you want water that we have right now, and we work our way through the list?
So my question would be, what if they don't pass?
Then they have to take it, and therefore, whatever their balance is, they bump to the bottom of the list.
Yeah, they, they don't, they go to the bottom of the list. They take their thousand gallons, okay, and they go to the bottom of the list.
With a new amount of whatever they need.
Right, and now they only need nine hundred gallons.
Okay, well, let's talk about this after that. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point.
Let's wait and see what they say.
When I show you, you'll, you'll understand it.
I think we probably have one or two options and an actual scenario.
Yeah, if we could, we can talk about this offline, so it can...
Debbie, we are going to table ordinance two thousand thirteen dash five.
Are we actually tabling it?
Yeah, until planning can get back through it, Chris can have the changes made, and they can finish out all that process stuff.
I just wanted to say one thing. If you were going to not actually table it, it would have to be re-renewed because of the...
Right, right. When, when they get it all sorted out, we will reintroduce it, and we'll set a new public hearing, and we'll set an actual public hearing.
And I hate to do this, but just real quick, back to the ordinance regarding, it was two thousand thirteen four, if you're going to keep that the same, and actually, once we get a recommendation from the planning commission, at that next month, it needs to be re-renewed.
Correct. Well, we will have to reintroduce that.
Okay, well, your sixty days is going to be up, so it's...
Right, well, after...
Are you saying it has to be reintroduced now or next month?
If you want to keep going with this, reintroduce...
Okay, well, then I will reintroduce it.
Thank you.
So it's re, that, so that one is reintroduced, so if planning gets us a recommendation, in the next thirty days, we can deal with it next month, and we'll, we can get that moving forward.
And now you have to start over.
I got you. Thank you, Debbie. Very good. Two thousand thirteen dash ten, this is a ordinance to change our purchasing plans, and I know Chris wants to introduce that. All right, Chris wants to move that one. I think we've introduced it already.
Yeah, we introduced it. So I'll go ahead and move ordinance two thousand and thirteen dash ten for approval this evening.
I will second that one.
I had just one quick area, just something to ask. In...
And the only change here was to limit the, the amount of time any one consulting company could have a contract with the town.
It would be in capital letter B. When, when it's talking about that qualifications review committee, and I, I read where it said two to three town staff will review all the submissions.
That's already code, right?
Yeah, that's in code. No, I was just wondering, well, no, I, I, I understand that. I was just wondering, should we maybe amend that, or some way to, to add a council member to, to sit on that review committee?
We, we ultimately get the vote.
Well, I know we do. I'm just wondering if in the planning, you know, in, in the, the first look at it, I'm wondering if we should have a, a council member...
It would be nice, but I don't know that it's all that practical. I mean, because...
Those meetings happen during the daytime.
Right, right.
Like I mentioned, how many do they have?
I mean, it's practical, I'm the only person who's typically here every day, and I try not to spend too much time here, because I have to go actually work.
Is that a, is that a, is that a legislative function as well, do you do that kind of research?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
It's...
I mean, we, we ultimately voted up or down, so...
Right. I think, I think the minutia, me personally, I don't want to be involved. If somebody else does, then we can discuss it, but I think it kind of gets into daily workings, because how many things does, off the cuff, how many things do you guys go through for looking at bids and talking about them every day?
For consultants?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not, not that often.
Okay.
Now, this is just for choosing that candidate.
Right, this is going through all the bids that you get in.
So it's not every time that we're doing a new project.
Right.
It's every time we're, we're...
Once every five years.
Consulting services out for, right, so every five years.
And again, that's the reason why I just asked, if it would be something, you know...
Bob? Let's see Bob's hand up.
And the, the success in the recent sanitation and recycling contract, I, I think bears that out with, if you give the staff an opportunity, they will. And, and if I had been there, I would have just mucked it all up, because I don't know anything about the sanitation and recycling contract.
Well, I, I hold my question for Tom.
If that's the fabricated part for a trash truck, you're the man to call, right?
Absolutely. If, if that truck needs fixed, we can do that.
All right, any more discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous. All right. This is just here for, well, first off, we've got charter amendment, which is resolution two thousand thirteen dash three. We are really only handing this out tonight. We will bring this up next month. We could, in theory, vote on this tonight, but it would be a big mistake to not pass this and it's, and ordinance two thousand thirteen eleven, which goes with it at the same time. So we are introducing ordinance two thousand thirteen dash eleven. These are the changes from the election commission, which basically largely are changing things to make sure we can use electronic ballots. So it changes the term ballot to ballot or voting machine, or uses some language like that to, to make sure that's clear.
Changes to vote.
Vote, changes to vote. And it also removes our somewhat peculiar official write-in candidate section, in terms of having a real write-in candidate, which we, in theory, did anyways. And what it does instead is it expands our nominations to a week. We'll have the nominations meeting like we've always had, but then you've got a whole nother week to, to come in and get yourself nominated for office, to kind of solve some of those confusing problems, because it was kind of a mess. So that's really what's being done here.
So we're not, we're not making any decisions.
No decisions tonight. I've introduced it. We bring it up next month.
This was changed back in two thousand six. I think some of you in the audience remember the write-in issue that we had. I know I landed in Carroll County Circuit Court testifying. So I'd like to take a good hard look at that, because I think Mayor Johnson put some good steps in there, and I don't want to make sure they're not ripped out without...
No, take a look at it. I think this makes, this makes a lot of, I mean, I realize that oldness was an emergency knee-jerk reaction, and this is, and this is, this is, this is a way to really straighten it up.
Okay, good.
All right, those are just in. Okay, we have no unfinished business. Civility training. Councilman King and Mayor Rockenberg.
I think I'll address this. I know most of you know that, that when I ran for election, I ran on a platform of, you know, storing civility to this body. We've come a long way. We really have come a long way, but we can still go further. How we communicate with each other, and town staff, and the citizens dictates how successful we are at, at, you know, following the, the public's agenda and doing what they want us to do. For over a year now, the mayor and I have kind of batted back and forth, how do we, how do we put some kind of a civility course in here? How, how do we do this? So we decided to reach out to Kelly Fager of Etiquette for Every Day, and she's an expert in seminars and, and this type of training. And we've asked her to design a class based loosely on the MML, the MML classes in civility that we've all taken. And the only thing I can say is, you know, once we get this scheduled and everything, I encourage everybody to attend. I think this is, this is something that would be beneficial to us. If it proves beneficial to us, you know, we're, we're thinking of maybe moving it to some of the commissions, you know, maybe getting some town staff involved. I, I think this is something that can benefit the town very... Kelly, can you, can you explain to us?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelly Fager. I do have a copy here of the proposal that I had sent out. It's just a few bullet points. In my business, as you're passing that around, it's, it's called Etiquette for Every Day, and I have a background in education, human resources and training. So I have done quite a bit of facilitation and presentations and guest speaker appearances and offer classes and training, and all things etiquette, obviously, but also all things having to do with connections and civility and a lot of human resources and interview coaching as well. And you'll notice the first thing on there is I'm a taskmaster, and so I have suggested reading. But this book is a book that I base a lot of my civility speaking and, and training off of, and it's by actually a professor at Johns Hopkins, PM Forney, who is an expert and started the Civility Institute through Johns Hopkins University. And he has this book here called Choosing Civility, and many of you may have seen the bumper stickers that are green, and you see them on the back of the cars, and that's Howard County's huge civility movement. So when Councilman King and Mayor Rockenberg approached me, I was very excited about this, because I think that sadly, and, and I say this as a vested community member in Mount Airy, that the reputation of the council hasn't always been the greatest. And so I wanted to help try and make that a little bit better, and I think Councilman King, as you've referred to, I think there's been a lot of improvement, which is so exciting. But when I was contacted, I, of course, envisioned big picture and going out there and not only starting our work maybe with the council, but then having you be the leaders and the modelers to really take this and make it, you know, kind of a town-wide initiative that we can have and really demonstrate what Mount Airy is really about and what we all know Mount Airy is about. So the presentation format is set up in part, presentation, me jabbering away, but then the other part of that is also a workshop. And so you'll notice from the bullet points that I really start out big picture, and so talking about civility, what it looks like in our society, how did we get to the state of civility or incivility, depending on how you want to look at it. And then I funnel it down a little bit. So then let's talk about the council. Where have we been? Where are we now? Where do we want to be? What is the model that you want to set up? And how do you, as individual contributors, then, get there? And so how can we do the things like disagree? Not that there would ever be any disagreement in any body like this ever.
I, I've never seen that.
But I'm going to train all of you and then send you off to the national political scene so you can train them. So, you know, just really doing that, disagree, disagreeing agreeably, as I put in there. And then eventually, what I'd like to see is have the group come up with a draft of standards of civility. And those standards of civility are not just for the council, for the mayor, but also expanding that to anybody who steps up here at the microphone, because people... Because, um, people who step up to the microphone can also, um, not be perhaps as civil as we'd like them to be. And so I really envision taking this, you know, further under the leadership of the, the council and the mayor.
Excellent, excellent. And I think that we're looking for maybe a fall class, Bob?
Yeah, that's.
Schedules in the fall, so.
Yeah, everybody's so busy during, um, I think early fall would be good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll send out, uh, an invite and check a couple of dates for council availability, and we'll fall work for you, Kelly, as well?
Yes, great, thank you very much.
And again, thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
See you in the fall.
Bob, Pat, thanks for working on this. Uh, next up, pre-closing request for Sterling Glen. This should be, I think it's at the, somewhere in my packet. Thank you, Pat. Uh, July fourth block party, they wanna close, um.
Old vintage?
Okay, old vintage in the Sterling Glen subdivision, um. Uh, I move that we say close it, uh, any second?
Second.
Second from Bob. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they're sorted out. Last minute request there, we got it in before July fourth for them. All right, Flatiron Building, uh, repair funding, Chris and staff had some funding options, suggestions for us.
Yeah, so we had a workshop, I think it was last month, Barney? We had a workshop, uh, about the Flatiron Building, the Flatiron Building owned by town. Historical Society uses it, the police, the state troopers use it. Um, we know it's gonna need some repair. And what I wanted to try to do is get a little bit ahead of the game, just have a short, brief discussion on sources that might fund the repair. Um, I was sort of frustrated by the workshop discussion where staff was saying, well, we didn't, we're not sure how much money it's gonna cost. We're not sure to what extent we're gonna repair things. And rather than coming up with some ideas that we don't know how, where the money will come from, I thought just right up front, we should identify some potential sources of funding. So we could use that as we consider what, you know, town staff wants to do with the building, or engineering wants to do with the building. So, um, and I'll look to Heather for a little bit of help, but primarily, number one, we could finance. Uh, number two, we could actually dig into the general fund capital improvement that we have. And we have approximately three point five million dollars in that fund, and I'm not aware that's set aside for anything, right?
Well, it, permit money has fed that, but that is the exact funds that did this remodel.
Right.
Um, and also at times, there was some money spent previously that did renovations on the Flatiron Building. I don't even know how many years ago that was.
Yeah.
So, it is in the code worded for.
For such things.
We can use that for that, for two.
Right, and, and we've heard comments before, and I, I think Ken, you're the one that, that probably brought up, you know, why are we taking out loans? Why are we financing things when we have money sitting in the bank? So, um, that's one source of funds, three point five million to do that. And then also, I'll look to Heather, there's the idea of some community grants as well, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um, some of the, um, grant opportunities that may exist with the either renovation or repair of this building is community, community legacy funding. Um, everyone's aware of that with grant opportunities, there is an application process and it needs to be approved. Um, so the council would ultimately need to be prepared to forward fund that project. Um, but community legacy funding, depending on how much is bu- budgeted, uh, for any particular fiscal year, could be an option. With this, um, with our recent sustainable community designation, it does open up, um, the Strategic Demolition and Smart Growth Impact Fund. Um, which, which may be able to assist us with, uh, the renovations, repair, rebuilding. One other option that we're not certain that we're eligible for, um, but we will look into it further at the appropriate time, is grants through the Maryland Historical Trust. Um, we are, um, the Flatiron Building is in the designated historical area. Um, the Flatiron Building isn't a designated, um, uh, it's not on the historic, um, register. But we may be eligible for some assistance regardless. Um, one interesting, um, grant avenue may be the Empower Energy Grant, depending on, um, if there are any energy or green components with the rebuilding design or repair design. Um, again, these are all very preliminary, um, and once we, we find out, um, what the council's pleasure is with the project. Then we can, um, go forth and, and seek additional details in each of the individual grants.
Okay.
Thanks, Heather.
So, I mean, just, again, that, the idea here is just a brief introduction on potential sources of funding as we move forward Flatiron. I'd rather, I think, important to council know ahead of time where the money might come from.
Let me ask a quick question. Um, what does it take to get into the Maryland Registry for Historic?
Oh, God.
I was afraid you might ask, but honestly, Councilman Blaze, I do not know. Um, one, one, um, one thing, it's, it's sort of, um. If it's on the, the National Register of Historic Buildings, then there may be some very strong limitations as to what we can do with it.
Okay.
Um, so we would, we would wanna, um, find out how it could be eligible or what would make it eligible, um, before we wanna.
The reason why I ask is, we were out walking yesterday, and there's up on North Main, there's a home, uh, it's like two doors down from Delane Hobbs' house. That's on the Maryland Registry.
Okay.
And they've got a, they've got a plaque out on their gate that said, you know, Maryland Historic Registry, and. Just took a look at that and it, you know, it kinda jumped out at us. So when you, when you start talking about the Maryland Registry, I was like, okay, what, what goes into getting something on? Is, is it, you know, a, a, is it a birthplace? Is it a historic event? What, what?
Certain age? I mean, they may just have to a certain age qualify.
Yeah, it, it's, uh, it is, you know, if somebody important was born there, if it was a structure that was used, you know, for a, a particular.
Exactly.
So, uh, we're educating ourselves more on that, um, but we'll, we'll find out what you guys wanna do before we, uh.
All right, Pete didn't speak up, so.
I'm sorry, Pete.
I was watching like a-
I think that's okay. If I was heard, you were listening, you weren't born in that building.
And that's probably why, I know, he was.
All right, let's, uh, move into mayor and council reports. Mr. Mayor.
Independence Day celebration, as a reminder, that it's gonna be Wednesday, July third, at the Fireman's Carnival grounds. I wanna give a special thank you. Several local businesses that put this together, it was really the brainchild of, uh, Ben Glack. Am I saying the name correct, like? Golucky? Golucky?
Golucky.
Of Mount Airy Liquors and Dr. Chris Coleman of Mount Airy Eye Care. They're the ones that really came up with this, sat down. They met with two awesome staff members named Heather Smith and Melissa Oil, and, uh, really started snowballing from there, and so my hat's off to all you guys. You don't need to travel far away from town. You can have a celebration right here near hometown of Mount Airy. And next year, we're looking at, or they're looking at, perhaps having it on July fourth. Uh, I hear it's gonna rain on July fourth anyway, so this might be really good to have this July third. Uh, just a quick note about the Maryland Municipal Convention. I wanna thank the council members that took time off of work, uh, to attend the, uh, the conference. Let citizens know, we attended courses on a variety of issues such as grant applications, ethics, hot-button legal issues, code enforcement, economic downtown revitalization, consensus and team building. Several of those topics were just discussed during this meeting, and we attended classes on them at the convention, so. Uh, Blighted Properties, which will probably be up next month. I also wanna give a special congratulations to Councilmember Bob King. Who has completed in record time all the course requirements for the University of Maryland Academic Academy of Excellence, and will be graduating in September, so round the course. I'm, I'm right behind you, so hopefully I'll get there. Uh, downtown Main Street sidewalk, we were due, Barney and I have differing views on this, but, uh, we were, I thought we were due to start early spring, July. It looks like we're going more like August, so the sidewalk improvements will be happening. Just in summary, it's gonna make the crosswalks a lot safer for everybody. It's gonna make them ADA compliant. Uh, you also noticed the water main replacement, and this is last leg, another thirty days, we hope to be substantially completed. It's right up there. Some of the milling is gonna keep happening up on North Main Street. That's gonna go on probably through July eighth. Uh, Barney is gonna be having, uh, classes. He's already had six different seminars in town, talking to people about the sidewalk improvements on Main Street, so we can work with the businesses. Hats off to Barney for doing an excellent job communicating with the businesses to limit their impacts. Uh, Main Street Parks, uh, just a reminder to everybody, I don't know if Dave's gonna touch on this or has, but as a reminder, we have great parks and recreational opportunities. You can rent our covered pavilions, you can rent our big screens. There's a lot of opportunities in, in, uh, Mount Airy if you ever rented a screen. You ought to take advantage of that. Call Town Hall for details. Uh, some people have asked me about the new Mount Airy Middle School. Uh, the old school is now being demolished. It's gonna happen over the next couple of months, and the new school will open this fall. Uh, Gems of Mount Airy, Mount Airy's gem for many reasons. Uh, we're, we're a small town, but yet we're close to several larger metropolitan hubs. We're on a very unique, uh, groundwater system here. Uh, we have a lot of unique businesses that, what I found, and one of the reasons for this column is when I got handing out welcome packages with Mary Beth. A lot of the new residents don't know we have a custom butcher. They don't know we have a bowling alley. They don't know about things. Another gem that we have is our beautiful, our Beautiful Faces Permanent Makeup Salon. Uh, it provides solutions for anyone, young, too old, or, uh, to the men or women who's looking for softer, more natural appearance with special emphasis to those limited with health issues, such as arthritis, cancer. They do special services for, uh, breast cancer, uh, pigmentation services, some big words here I can't read, multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, Parkinson's, uh, stroke, vision. There's a variety of reasons why people might need permanent makeup. Uh, and Teresa Pastrak operates, uh, this business right here on Main Street. She's a breast cancer survivor. She's compassionate. So if you do have the need for this, for whatever reason, uh, you can get that right here in town. Uh, you're gonna touch on the ordinance council. The mayor's forums will be open on Saturday, July thirteenth and twenty-seven. Again, it's Saturday from ten thirty to noon. You can come, sit down in an informal setting and ask any questions, uh, address any concerns that you have. Volunteer opportunities, Mary asked me to bring up, at the Beautification Commission has a workday scheduled for Friday, July twelfth, from ten to two at Wildwood Park. They'll meet at the gazebo. Volunteers should bring a sack lunch, really, you said sack lunch? Sack lunch? The beautification committee will provide drinks, I guess.
Volunteers contest. Sat-bag lunch?
Mary Hush Hour at three oh one, six oh six, five eight nine oh. And, uh, there's, uh, it's still availability on the Water Commission, working with Chris Average, which is always a treat.
David had a question about your report.
Well, I had a quick question. Um, I heard the mayor say something about sidewalks are being done, again, while I was walking around this weekend. The sidewalks in front of the bank.
You mean the old bank building down there?
The old bank down here. What, what's the status on those? Because, first of all, who's, who's responsible for them? Is, is that a town responsibility? Is that the bank owner's responsibility? Are we doing anything to put up any type of caution, so that if somebody were to walk on their trip, fall, do whatever, you know, we're minimizing our, uh, I guess, liability?
Sure. Um, we haven't done anything as far as the cautions. We, we certainly can. Uh, we're trying not to close the sidewalks, otherwise, you know, people can't go back and forth. But, um, the, uh, that sidewalk, uh, fell in during the storm sewer project. However, the contractor's not responsible for that, the way, the way it happened. And so we're working to get that sidewalk. We already have a drawing for it, uh, to get that put back. It's not part of the state highway sidewalk. They, they stopped a little short of that. So, uh, we do have a plan to get that. I have three contractors giving me prices on it. Uh, so hopefully we can get that put in very soon.
Okay, so, so it is our responsibility?
It is our responsibility.
Okay, so what are we doing to, you know, to minimize the risk, to, you know?
Some kind of caution. I, I would have to agree with the council.
I would too.
We, we should put some type of caution. Maybe we can keep the sidewalk open, but still put caution tape, some cones, something. I, I would agree. I, I thought about it and I just didn't bring it up. But I wanna thank the councilmen for doing that. Can we do something, Dan and Barney, get some signage up?
Yeah, we sure can.
To address that. I think that would be a good idea.
Does that address your concern?
Yeah, I mean, my, my big thing, I just wanna know who owns it, and then what are we gonna do to fix it?
Those, those are good points.
And we had appointments.
Uh, and we do, and just real quick, a couple of things that weren't in my mayor's report. Uh, I am scheduling a meeting right now, uh, Bruce with, uh, Commissioner, uh, Blaine Young to go over the fire tax. One of the things you all are gonna hear, and one of the things we heard one side, I'm hearing a little bit the other side, is that why Frederick County residents, uh, may only, if they have a fire in their home, that's only time that, that. They will be responded to by the Mount Airy Fire Department. They wouldn't use the Frederick County Fire Department. However, with the, some of the feedback from the commissioners to me was, if they were to travel outside of their homes on any streets in Frederick, if they were to get in an accident, at that point, they would be using Frederick County Emergency Services.
If that applies to anybody from any state in the country.
Certainly does, certainly does. That was just one of the comments that came back and something that we'll be discussing, that you are Frederick County residents, you might use the services outside of town. That's what they said on the messenger, as I see somebody's eyes glaring through.
So, so if you're not, not, I'm not begging, but if you're a Carroll County resident, you're driving up to Frederick and you get into an accident, are you gonna be using Frederick County response?
No, they're gonna send Carroll County all the way.
Yeah, well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, that, that is a, but I'm sorry, that, 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 that's about a.
You got it, right, Bruce?
Uh, also, just to let you know, I've had several complaints about door-to-door solicitations in Mount Airy. It's basically, there's, there's some door-to-door solicitations that are legal, boy scouts, girl scouts, and some that are protected by First Amendment rights. But basically, people that are out there selling services, it is illegal unless they have a solicitor's license.
Peddler's license.
A peddler's license, just so you know, we have never issued a peddler's license in Mount Airy.
But you can get one.
You can get one, but we've just never issued one. So if you see that, people selling meat out of their truck, uh, repair services, call the state police, call the mayor, and we'll get the people moved out.
Cause we, we, so, we really don't mind people doing it as long as they pay us.
Right.
I mean, that's really what we're saying. That's really what we're saying.
It's a dollar?
Did he give, the, the three hundred dollars, man? I got, I got nine hundred dollars for the meat for three hundred.
He never got to me, you know, but he was hitting nodding here, but, uh, I'll just let you know, we did receive full police funding for Carroll County this year for our part of the super. Close your applause, we're probably not gonna get it next year, but we got it this year, so that's good. And, uh, we put together some good numbers. Debbie, thanks for your work on that. We did get full funding, so.
So, um, what, what was our portion? Because remember how we had talked about during budget cycle?
Seventy, like eighty thousand dollars.
So, okay, if we remember when we talked about the, um, back during the budget, anything that was over?
I'm getting, I'm getting corrected.
We still have not gotten the final figure in. We are going to get half of the trooper funding for that, for doing trooper half, when it is determined exactly what it is.
Okay, so, but we haven't gotten the money?
We don't know what they have to say.
Indirect costs, I did get a call from Lieutenant Bowman, what, former Lieutenant Bowman. And I did, um, the indirect cost has dropped significantly, so we will have a decrease from what the last figure we received. But after July first, we should be getting it any day after July first, so.
So, anything, any day after July?
And that, any, you know, so we, it's gonna be, we're gonna get funded for that half of the trooper from the county, but we don't know the exact number.
So should we know next month what, what our portion of the?
Their numbers always come in late, so we, I don't even think we got full police numbers yet.
That's what I'm saying, we do not have.
So we'll see, I know you had a concern with.
Well, no, because, no, because I wanted to say, cause we budgeted that money at what level, and we said if it came in underneath, we were gonna take what the difference was, and we were gonna fund the fire, fire company with that money.
Right.
So, if those numbers come in, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna have to do a budget amendment to, to push that over.
But we need to know what those numbers are.
If we could have that available, maybe we could do that next month.
Yeah, we need to know, yeah, what those numbers are.
It's, so it's, it's looking good so far, guys. Give you a heads up. And the last one, uh, we had received a comment from a, uh, citizen that was a banker, looking into our, our investments. Just let you know, we have, uh, we've looked into those investments. We're expecting a letter now from, uh, what's her name? Our auditor?
Roberta.
Roberta's gonna send a letter. Basically, the email you've already received from Charlene was spot on. Uh, uh, we're basically where we should be. Municipality follows different rules for investing. We can't do exactly what private industry, industry can do. Uh, but there may be a few opportunities based on that suggestion, so. I hope to have that finalized for you guys next month, and just let me know, we're working on it. That concludes my mayor's reports.
You've got some nominations, though.
But before you get your, can you repeat the date for the beautification? July twelfth, what was it?
July twelfth?
July twelfth, intended to.
Love you. Friday, July twelfth, from ten AM to two, Wildwood Park, bring a sack lunch. They will provide. Uh, the commissions for, uh, commission appointments are actually reappointments for economic development. It's Andrew Williamson and Michael Van Sant for EDC. And I'm also recommending George Guevara for the Parks and Rec.
Dave, did I send that to you? You got that?
You didn't send it, but I, I met him at our last.
Did you meet him? Did, did we not forward that to Dave and?
If, if, you might have, you might have.
All right, well, anyway, I, I just don't remember, Debbie thinks.
I'll, I'll, I'll move, except the, uh, the, the reappointments and appointment, as the mayor suggested. Got a second from everybody. Pick your, pick, pick, Debbie. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Sanitation Recycling and Arts Council.
Okay.
That's an eye pound vote, Bob, I gotta admit.
Our new Hall of Unity Disposal and Recycling LLC will be making its first pickups tomorrow morning in the town of Mount Airy. Our new hall of unity disposal and recycling LLC will be making its first pickups tomorrow morning in the town of Mount Airy. Just wanted to take a moment to thank Bob Clark and Key Sanitation for the outstanding job that they've done here for at least the last ten years, I knew they were long before that.
Yeah.
But they set a standard, it's gonna be very, very tough for anybody else. Bob Clark, if you're watching, did a great job. Um, let's see, the next sanitation recycling meeting is on Wednesday, July 17th, seven o'clock right here. Next yard waste pickup days are on July the 13th and August the 3rd. And that's all I have for sanitation and recycling, but the Arts Council is getting ready for their second show of, well, their second inaugural show, I don't know what you call it. Um, there's a, their, their theme is expressions of summer. It opens up on Saturday, July the 20th, right here in Town Hall. Once again, you'll see all the, all the art hanging in the hallway there. Um, and it runs through August the 17th. Also, the music guys and the music gals will be doing Saturday night concerts, starting at seven o'clock and going until whenever, so bring your lawn chairs out. They'll be right here next to Town Hall, or they'll, and, and in climate weather, they'll be here in Town Hall. And there is a schedule, Mary just gave me a schedule. So, um, it's some, it's some great music, um, there's some jazz, some guitar, um, really, it's really worth your while. Um, and those will be on every Saturday night between July the 20th and August the 24th. Either in, in, in Town Hall or right outside, so.
Bob, just give Terry King, I think, a thanks from all of us here for what she's doing and how she's promoting downtown and how she's promoting the arts.
Um, she is very excited, she is getting a positive response from everybody in town who has anything to do with this. You've helped her out quite a bit, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Average has helped out quite a bit. Um, she's very excited about this. And that's all I have for sanitation and recycling and the Arts Council.
Got, got one suggestion for either the Arts Council or, or maybe for the mayor through Town Staff. Uh, we hung all the stuff up on the wall last time and then obviously we took it down, we had holes, we had to patch, we had to paint, we put all the stuff back up. If we're gonna be doing this from time to time, and I think it's a great idea, we should be, we should come up with some kind of system for hanging things in there so we can do it. If you go to art places, they have those things.
They have flexible, they have flexible hanging systems.
We're gonna come out and if I can't...
They're ready to pull one up so we can keep swapping pictures.
Yeah, we are gonna do that. Because in addition to swapping them out, what I wanted to do with historical society is actually change some of the pictures out there, they're just...
Right, you can keep moving them around that way without having holes.
So I wanna keep flipping those pictures out too, to keep it, to keep it fresh, so.
No, that's a good idea.
Thank you for that suggestion, and we are looking in that, so glad to know you're aboard.
Parks and Rec Beautification.
Okay, um, this weekend, Mount Airy is going to be the host for the Ford County Little League Maryland State Tournament. That actually starts on, uh, 6th July at eleven AM. Everybody here should have gotten an invitation to attend the opening ceremonies, so, um, if you're going to be able, please get ahold of Jim Gill, he's my next door neighbor and he keeps asking who's gonna show up and all that kind of stuff.
Well, since ours is VP by July 3rd, so I have a couple of days.
Correct, so, if, you know, okay.
Thanks for reminding, Dave.
Um, next camp night will be August 10th. Uh, we have a, uh, whole list of entertainment for the night. Babe the Movie will be shown on the big screen, so come out and support that. Uh, Rails to Trails work continues, if you're interested in coming out and helping out with that, uh, contact Larry Hushour. For beautification, uh, the Beautification Commission is continuing to work on, uh, coordinating the park signs. And again, I need to foot stomp, not that everybody else hasn't, Friday, July 12th, from ten to two, uh, there's gonna be beautification project in Wildwood Gazebo and bring a sack lunch. And that is it for Parks and Rec and Beautification.
Mary, you couldn't ask for more, planning, economic development.
Thank you, so, uh, for the planning, um, unfortunately, the Planning Commission was not able to meet, uh, due to not having a quorum. Uh, EDC did meet on the 26th of June, uh, they covered five items. Um, they discussed the EDC webpage and changing out some of the logistics of the way information's displayed as long as, and in conjunction with the images on there. Uh, they also talked on their new business about, um, figuring out the last mile and making fiber available to Mount Airy, uh, and making it easier on businesses here. Andrew Williamson was, uh, elected as the chair again for EDC and, uh, the EDC Commission also, uh, reviewed and approved, uh, forwarding their annual report before the July, uh, first deadline to the mayor for his review. And, uh, the next meeting for EDC is going to be a joint meeting, uh, for July and August. It will be the 21st of August at seven PM in Town Hall, and that concludes both my reports.
Okay. Streets and Roads, uh, we did not meet in June, we, we're meeting every other month. Our next meeting this month would actually fall the night of the Fireman's Parade, so we're gonna be meeting a week early. Uh, we'll be meeting July 18th at seven thirty in this room. Uh, normal topics of discussion are speeding and how to stop it, and I see Ken waving his hand. Okay, yeah, yeah, so I think if somebody...
Parks and Rec is here.
Parks and Rec will be upstairs, so we will be relegated to the dungeon downstairs. So if you walk in, um, and you wanna go to an interesting meeting, it won't be here for Parks and Rec, it will be downstairs.
We have, you may have some Buffalo Road people here for your next meeting.
Okay, well, the, send it, guys, if you're up here in Parks and Rec, if they look friendly, send them downstairs, if they don't, keep them up here. All right, Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer, we've changed, we, due to the holidays, we're changing our monthly meeting to July the 9th. We'll be looking at our first draft of a fog ordinance, again, fatsoil and grease, which we had a briefing the other, the other week, other month. Um, also, if I could put Monica, oh, Monica's busy, uh, Barney, if you can give us a status on the Main Street project, please?
Sure, the, uh, the Water Main Project for, um, um, going from one tower to the other, we're almost done on North Main Street with the paving, uh, you see they just milled out today, uh, up past the school and, um, they'll pave the next day, mill one more time, pave one more time, and they should be done. All of our work should be done on North Main Street, so we start casting straight on South, South Main Street. So, um, Water Main's almost complete, they've got probably another couple of weeks to finish down the paradise.
Guess the rains been setting them back.
It has, it has, but, um, they're still chugging along.
We had, did we get, um, anything back from the state on the consent and our 2020/2020? So I know consent, we accepted an initial letter, they asked for additional information, we provided that, and we heard anything back from, at them on either one of them?
We, we just heard back that they accepted the revised water audits, which is what they were needing for the consent. Uh, so they do have that as, uh, being accepted. We're just waiting to hear back for everything else.
So they've accepted the revised audit, so we still haven't gotten the official signature that says we're no longer, we've met everything, so the consent agreement's not over?
Right, the last email I got is, uh, June 10th.
Okay, June 10th, and then, um, the comments on 2020/2020, are they gonna comment on it or not?
I believe they're gonna comment on everything as, as a, as a whole.
Okay.
But, um, yeah.
Any idea when, next month perhaps?
I could certainly give them a call, just...
Okay, yeah, if you could, just so we have an update next month, yeah, thank you.
So one quick go back, it was just pointed out to me that the, uh, EDC meeting on the 21st of August will not be here in Town Hall, it'll actually be at the Mount Airy Tavern, um, so it was just told that, so I wanna make sure everybody knew where it was.
That's interesting, I wanna go to their meeting.
In the back room.
Yes.
Hey Ken, how about Streets and Roads?
Supporting local businesses.
Do we need a, do we need a sack lunch for that?
Last, last year...
They didn't say a sack lunch.
Can we bring a sack?
Last year, we met at Lorianza's and actually had a very nice time and they were, they, they were very excited because they said, "EDC, what is that?" So it's, it's nice to, it's nice to get out and stop, Scott.
Monica, you're up next.
Okay, just a couple of things, um, Congressman Van Hollen is gonna have an open house for his, um, office up the street on July 15th, and it's gonna be in the evening from six to seven thirty, so just wanted to give everybody a heads up about that. Um, we did, we are sending some information to our state police officers, um, so they have security issues that they wanna address before that happens. And they think they're just gonna have like an open house in their building and they may be collect over in the bowling alley.
Now, what day you showing that as?
July 15th.
Fifteenth, okay, good.
Yeah, July 15th in the evening from six to seven thirty.
Okay.
Um, we are gonna have a, a presentation by the architects on the Flatiron Building, I believe on the 8th of July, right Barney? Barney, July 8th for the Flatiron Building presentation?
Yeah, next Monday, yes.
For the ar- architects and, um, the other thing I had was, we are gonna be doing a little infrastructure project up on Carroll Avenue with the sewer line to, um, address those sewer smells that's been going on forever. Um, and that's happening really in like the next ten days, that's it.
All right, uh, Tom, you have anything for the attorney report, you there?
I just, yeah, just, uh, very quickly, on the Harrison LeShir documents that I got back from my state council, I have reviewed them. And they are actually very close, being capturing what our intent was, uh, as, as, uh, we discussed in our prior meeting. I should on Monday have, uh, put my version preview, um, on July 8th or thereabouts. Uh, a few, uh, individual reviews and comments, so that's what I have, and I just, uh, did wanna, uh, address two rail to trails issues with you all in closed session.
Yes, we have, and we have your stuff to hand out when we get into that meeting.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll keep you online. All right, well, I think we've got the code enforcement report here at our desk. Uh, is there any other business?
Debbie's...
Debbie's waving her hands.
Just a reminder, um, anyone who's gonna participate in the parade, um, six thirty up at the elementary school.
Okay, Thursday?
Yeah.
July 25th.
Do we need to inform you ahead of time if...
Yeah, I'm...
Yeah, they need to have cars.
Right now, yeah, I need the head count, so I don't have any hands to get.
Count it on me.
And if you're bringing your own car, let me know, if it's not, and if you're bringing your own...
I'm not this year, cause I don't have a driver, all my kids moved away and my wife's gonna be walking in the parade with somebody else. You would drive me, Pete? You would do that for me?
I'll take the new, take the new convertible. I've ridden in Pete's truck. It is pretty nice.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll move that the bills be paid, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, got choices there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, we, I move that we go into a closed session, um, I guess I have to, no, Debbie's got some paperwork. Closed session for the purpose of obtaining legal counsel and to discuss real property issues. Uh, I'm moving that, who is gonna second that?
I'm sorry, seconding.
Okay, King. This one doesn't have our names on it, Debbie. You put them all, okay, Helt, aye, King?
Aye.
Average?
Aye.
Strong?
Aye.
Blaze?
Aye.
Okay, everybody was aye, and, um, I will also move that as soon as we're done with that meeting, we automatically adjourn, so we don't have to come back into open session, I got a session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, closed meeting in five minutes, guys. That's a, uh, my proactive adjournment.